The special meeting of the Seminole Airport Authority, roll call please.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Jeff Griffin.
Here. We have a quorum.
Do we have any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Airport Authority? With none, we will move on to current business. Item one, consideration and possible action to approve the release of CARES Act funds of $5,593 for the installation of a buried electric line from Highway 99 to the new tee hangers at the airport.
Motion approved.
Roll call please.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, like so, we are adjourned. Call to order the special meeting of the Seminole Municipal Authority, roll call please, Jay.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Thank you.
Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
John Kramer.
Sorry.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Do we have any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Municipal Authority? Okay, so are these, actually, did we have a sign up sheet?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you sign up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't get that.
Can you get the sign up sheet?
Sign up sheet, it's right there.
It's right there.
Sorry about that. If you would state your name and business, or if you live in our ward in Seminole.
Sure, my name is Todd Adcock, and I'm a co-owner of Central Disposal. With me is my brother, John Mark Adcock, and our operations manager, Randy Poole. We just wanted to say, come and introduce ourselves, let you know who we are, and how excited we are to be working with Seminole. Thirteen, thirteen years ago, we bought Central Disposal, and the city of Seminole was on our list, that's not me, of a city that we wanted. So this has been on, you've been on our radar for a long time, and we're just really excited to be working with you, working with your staff, and making you very happy with your decision and proud of the work that we're going to do for you. Picking up trash, it's hard work, but we're picking up trash. And my brother picks it up, and I bury it. So I'm in charge of our environmental compliance for our landfill, which is North Craig, and our transfer station in Shawnee. Reason why we can work for each other for thirteen years, because we drill a lot in sand. You pick it up, I bury it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have about how we operate, and any expectations you have, or anything like that.
So when we get to the agenda item, that will be our opportunity to ask questions.
Okay.
So when we get to it, we'll see if anyone has any questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other appearances, petitions from the audience? Okay, with that, we'll move on to current business. Item one, consideration and possible action to approve the release of our funds of $8,100 towards the construction of a sewer line to connect the Bryan Crawford Memorial Baseball Complex with the sewer lift station southeast of Seminole High School.
Move with approval.
Second.
Roll call please.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes, sir.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item two, consideration and possible action to approve the contract with Central Disposal for the collection, removal, and disposal of residential and commercial solid waste within the corporate limits of the city of Seminole.
Move to approve.
Do we have any questions that you would like to ask, anyone?
Yeah, I do, sorry. Do you feel like you're going to have to expand your trucks and equipment and stuff to be able to cover us, or do you already have that in place?
A little of both, but we do have plans to get, obviously, new polycarts with our names on it, and as well as trucks as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, we're excited.
I've got a question about cardboard. We've been having a really big problem with boxes and stuff here in the city. Do you have any suggestions or any plans on how we can manage our cardboard?
Yeah, there's always lots of options we can do. I know that we've talked of putting a roll off somewhere within the city yard, and having something that people can drop off cardboard. We take all of our, the city of Shawnee does curbside recycling in eight gallon tubs, and it's all mixed, and we take that to Batliner Recycling in Oklahoma City. So we can do either that.
Where do we take the cardboard in Shawnee? Does that still go to Page Seven?
Uh, Page Seven in Shawnee will also accept the cardboard, so if we put it in a roll off of some sort, and make sure that we're not getting trash in there, that's the big thing, that we don't contaminate the cardboard, then we can, we can help out.
Good luck not getting trash in it, we've tried that.
It's, it is difficult, but we'll come up with something.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I'll second Tim's motion.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, roll call please.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Intertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Sign, you're opposed. We're adjourned, we'll move on to the special meeting of the Seminole City Council Meeting. Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Do we have any appearances, petitions from the audience? And with none, we'll move on to current business. Item one, consideration and possible action to remove Stephanie Davis from the park board pursuant to Title 11-2-3 of the City of Seminole Code of Enforcement. Do we have any comments from anyone? Kevin, do you want to speak?
How are you all doing?
Good.
Dr. Kevin R. Kemper, I'm an attorney from Guthrie, also a First Amendment scholar. I represent Ms. Davis. Part of my role here is to provide a response on her behalf to the concerns that have been raised. Part of my goal, hope springs eternal, you know, I've been talking with your attorney, Mr. Carter, we have a good working relationship, I think he'd bear that out. I've expressed to him some concerns I have about due process, some concerns I have about fundamentally how there's been, just to say, a problem. Y'all think it's her. I think it's, everybody is contributing to it in some way, whether you want to or not. And so if you'll let me, as I give a response from her as to allegations, I want to make some suggestions for what might be a good way to calm all this down.
And I would like to say, you have five minutes.
All right.
I would be fair and let you know that.
Now, I could be, I could be very, I could be very direct as to, if I understand the allegation correctly, my client behaved in ways that were not appreciated, liked, welcomed at some park board meetings, and I think, we all know it goes deeper than that, okay? But my simple response is, if you want to take her off the park board, whatever, do it. You know, you have the authority for good cause. What makes me scratch my head, if I understand my facts correctly, is that her term is over in two months. Just my personality, but if it had been me, I think I might have just let that two months expire, and encourage everybody to make peace when they can, and leave each other alone when they can't. That's just how I approach things. I would identify that, you know, my client moved here from Colorado, she's from Texas. I'm from rural Oklahoma. I understand the cultural nuances of how we communicate, how we do things, how the longer you've lived in Seminole, the more you understand how things are done in Seminole, okay? But I want to encourage you to be sure you have your facts straight. I've seen a nonofficial, unofficial transcript of the last meeting in question, and I would have questions about the behaviors of the other park board members. Sounded like a catfight to me, except I don't want to say that, because I want to be very careful that I don't perpetuate some of the stereotypes that I think are being perpetuated against my client. She has an opinion, she speaks up, she's a she. It's real easy when somebody doesn't like what a female has to say, to treat her as she's crazy, or hardheaded, or whatnot. That's misogynistic. That's just, that's just fancy talk for, that's just rude. Now, my client is not going to change who she is. She, believe it or not, based on what I've heard from people, my client would like to be able to work in a good way with the leaders of Seminole, for Seminole to be a better place than it already is, I'm sure it's a fine community, and she wants to make that difference. But I want to point out before my time is done, and one of the reasons why she has lawyered up, is that in the course of the past several months, we've had issues that relate to this city council about how you, you didn't like what some of the people were saying on comments on social media, and so you backed up on having a public forum, people don't have their say anymore when they said it. That raises all kinds of constitutional questions Mr. Carter and I have had respectful discussion about. That's still kind of a mess. My client has made requests for records under the Open Records Act, that to some degree have been met, and some degree have not. So that's when we move from trying to make peace, this is political, to, that can become actionable in court, district court of Seminole County, and if they don't rule as we see fit, we can take the Court of Appeals, and on up the food chain. Now, what I'd like to, in conclusion, suggest, is that, I'm going to quote my grandma, who went on to heaven a long time ago, the way she taught me about how we deal with things, if it gets to the point where people are making accusations and fighting in public, you've already failed. You could have resolved all these things in better ways, in quieter ways, but now, things are livestreamed. Now people can take that YouTube video and send it all over the world, through the World Wide Web, the internet, and so we're not as able to do things that way. The other is that I ask whether you kick her off the park board, keep her on the park board, elect her mayor, whatever, whatever Seminole does with Stephanie Davis, just understand, whether she's male or female, whether she's from here or not, she has a voice, she can speak that voice in a participatory democracy, and last time I checked, this is still the United States of America, and our governments are based upon such premises. And so I would like to think that the people of Seminole would have enough graciousness and patience and open-mindedness that they might listen to what she might have to say to benefit them, and understand that she has the right to do it. You know, she doesn't have the right to be on the park board necessarily, so.
You have one, one minute.
All right, thank you. Again, vote her off. Look into it. I don't think, and I agree with Mr. Carter, I don't think that tonight is a proper way or time of turning this into like a court, where people are questioned and things like that. I don't think it's necessary. And, you know, yeah, I'm going to use this example. We all know from the Oscars on Sunday how Will Smith sure has been a lot of trouble for slapping Chris Rock. He's apologizing, it's all over the news, but last time I checked, Chris Rock sure insulted his wife. Now, I'm not justifying him slapping him, but if it be me, I would have punched him, but that's a different story, okay? What I'm here to say is that, in a situation like that, they both need to be making amends. They both need to reach out to each other. They both need to get along. And my humble recommendation to the city council is, is to Stephanie Davis, build a bridge and get over it. She's going to be her. So however y'all want to proceed, that's your right and duty. I'll answer any questions I can, and if there are, in the process of this specific accusations made as to my client, I think she would like to reserve the right to speak for herself. But my goal is to see if we can work this out in a good way, not to disrespect anybody who might be having conflict with her, but so that we can, we can understand, there's a lot going on here, and I don't think that we want to make this ugly. I'm just making that assumption. I figure, I'm 55, but I am of the belief that most people are decent people. Every once in a while, you get a knothed, every once in a while, you get somebody who's really evil. Most people are decent people, and I'm basing what I'm saying, assuming that y'all are decent, assuming she's decent, let's figure this out. That's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak this time?
I would just like to reserve my right to speak.
This is your opportunity to speak.
Oh, so then it's up to you.
Just as a reminder, if you'd state your name and so where do you live in.
Okey dokey. Good evening, council. My name is Stephanie Davis, I live in Ward One. I think we all know why we're here. Last city council meeting, the mayor, despite an agreement with the city attorney and myself, chose to make a statement which he prepared that lined out a couple of accusations against me. His statement did not include any forms of evidence, so I can only present the proof in my possession that contradicts his statement. First off, I want to say that I understand that having an outsider, even though I am southern, come into town and bring forward some of the issues that the city faces is not fun or comfortable. Most of us who live here are well aware that if you don't have the right last name, you are a little too malvied, or you don't participate in the right civic group, you won't receive much help from City Hall, as evidenced over the last year and a half. I can't tell you how many screenshots I have of people wishing that their representatives would advocate on their behalf, instead of just participating in good old boy deals with their friends, or whoever can scratch their back the best. It's hard to hear that the town that you all love so much, and I love, isn't what it once was, or how you still picture it in your mind, but this isn't the bustling city it once was, with the thriving downtown, regular events like the rodeo or gusher days. We have a 1% decline in population every single year, with a 25% poverty rate, which is higher than Compton, California. It's hard to hear that your city employees are breaking the law, and putting the city at risk for litigation. It is hard knowing that someone with the experience and knowledge of legal remedies is finally willing to hold them all accountable, despite the retaliation that comes at me. I've spent the last three years trying to work with you all, and asking nicely that we work together to find solutions that are beneficial for both the city budget and the city citizens. But once I began asking questions about a few things that felt off, that's when I was shunned, began getting boxed out, and retaliatory actions came against me from your employees. Now, let's address some of these accusations. Well, it appears that me asking questions about agenda items and advocating for a cleaner Seminole is the only evidence that the mayor has to show that I create a negative atmosphere which distracts from the board doing business. However, my clearly recorded copy of the park board meeting shows that that negative atmosphere and distractions are actually created by the chair of the park board, Donna Quinalti. During the recording of the last park meeting, there are 31 documented instances of Donna interrupting park board members. Thirty-one. There are eight instances of Lauren interrupting another park board member. There are seven instances of Bryant Baker interrupting a park board member. There is even an instance of Shelley Robertson interrupting a park board member. Yet, we're only here to discuss staff, whether or not the city employees or Ms. Quinalti, like me, is irrelevant. I have a duty to express concerns on behalf of the taxpayers of Seminole, and it is clear from the comments made by the member of the public that was in attendance at the park board meeting, that I'm advocating for exactly what the taxpayers, who are our bosses, want, and City Hall is just not a fan. As you can hear on the recording, I'm not the hostile one, but I should always be allowed to express my opinion as a serving member of the park board, participating in an official and public meeting. Also evidenced in the recording, I was not the one causing distractions, I was simply asking questions about an agenda item, and advocating for trash cleanup throughout the city. Questions are not distractions. If you pull all the minutes from each park board that I have attended, you'll see that I voted yes on every single agenda item until this last park board meeting. You will also see that I'm the one that motions to approve permits. That doesn't seem much like hindering business to me. Just because a typical form is for board members to fall in line with agenda items, it doesn't mean that any discussion or questioning about that is a distraction. And as you can hear from the recording, the member of the park board was very concerned about the same things that I expressed. In fact, she sent the email to the mayor right after the park board, and then even spoke about her opinion in the last city council meeting. I'd say that that I am successfully representing the taxpayers at that point. Once again, Donna was the aggressor of the entirety of the meeting, the only member of the park board to call another member a name, and she was the one who escalated the situation after the meeting adjourned, when I pointed out and tried to mitigate a possible violation of her and Bryant of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act. As you all know, some of our school, school board has litigation about violations of the Sunshine Law here in Oklahoma, and as a litigation paralegal, I was trying to help us mitigate another lawsuit for Seminole. Anyhow, I'm not going to be able to quote myself, because there are laws that we can't use for vanity, but the gist of what I told Donna was that her experience is different than what we experience, because she has political clout here. She's friends with the mayor, she's coworker with the mayor, they have friendship going on, so when she wants information, all she's got to do is call. Even in the park board meeting, she references that earning, calls her all the time and talks about it. Whereas me, I can't get information unless I put in an open records request. So our experiences are different because of her position, and she does not get to invalidate the experience that I, and a large percentage of other people here who don't have the right last name, who don't have the same connections as her, feel and experience every single day. Thank you for letting me talk, I have so much more, but you're restricting me to five minutes, but I do have the park board recorded, and you can see exactly who the interrupter was the entire time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any, anyone else?
So my name is Donna Quinalti. I am not a member inside the city.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. I, however, have been on the park board for several years, at the request of people from the city, because our company and personally use a lot of the facilities that pertain to the park board. I think it is extremely important that our parks and recreational areas that we have for the public are maintained well, and it helps bring in revenue by tourism in several different ways. So there are a few things that I would like to clarify from the statements that were made by the attorney and by Stephanie. The first one is, I only know of information directly related to the park board, so I have no idea about city council, anything that Stephanie might be involved with outside of the park board. On the park board, there are four women who serve, and one male. So I do not feel there's any gender bias whatsoever on the park board. And I want that to be known publicly and in record, that I feel like there is no gender bias there whatsoever. I do feel like everybody's opinion is very, very important. I feel like Stephanie does have some valid points when it comes to trash cleanup, and the way we want our city to look and be presented. But there is also a responsible way to hold a meeting, and there is an agenda that we are required to perform and go by, and so we don't have the options or luxuries to entertain any idea as it comes up, if it's not an agendated item. So staying on track is important, much like in this meeting, you have limited the time to speak on outside things for five minutes, so we can move the agenda along, and it's restricted to agenda items, if I'm, if I'm correct on that. The things at the last park board that happened, it was very difficult to stay on task and on the agenda. I tried to do that as absolutely much as possible, and some of the other people there as well tried to do the same thing. There are rules and a specific order in which things should be done, and we tried to carry that out to the best of our ability. So I'm not sure, personally, I have no issue with Stephanie at all, and professionally, she made me sound way more important than I think that I am, so that was quite interesting. But after the meeting concluded, I felt like the meeting was over and we were moving forward, and we had done the task set in front of us. However, in the hallway, there was some very vulgar terms used, and to reference Chris Rock and Will Smith, probably if my husband had been there, it would not have went as well. But I professionally moved forward, told her that she should shut her mouth, and proceeded to my car to leave. Lanny and Lauren were both witnesses to the occurrence as well. It was extremely upsetting, and she is correct, there was a lot of profanity used, and it was very, very offensive to me. And I stated specifically, and I think everybody has the exact details, so there's no need for me to say what those statements were. I think the attorney received those, because I did send an email to Mayor Griffin, and told him that I would not be able to continue on the park board if that type of behavior was allowed to happen, even after a meeting. We have a civic duty, and that's what I feel that I'm doing, there's, there's no money involved in this, it's not for fun. I take off work to go to the park board meetings, and put in my time to do those things. So to be attacked personally by someone for things that happen in a meeting, I felt was completely inappropriate. And to just be honest with you, I have more than enough things to do. I am simply trying to do what's best for the city in those meetings, so that's why I do it, as volunteer. I have no interest in it being a catfight, as the attorney said, and I think the other ladies on the board would agree with me. So if you have any questions, I am more than open, and will share my honest opinion with you on anything, or give you any details that you would like. Okay?
So Brad, do we have the statements? Have copies of those to hand out?
Take one, pass one.
Yeah, take one, pass one. Do you need one of these for somebody?
Probably.
Take just a moment while our city council. You'll need more.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment about what was handed to us?
Let them finish if you would.
It's over. It's over.
Okay. All right. Please.
I'd like to state for the record that my client will, use legal terms, will stipulate that will agree that in one sentence, she used a couple of words that some might consider vulgar, and she regrets that. She'd like for me to point out a few things about that. One, it happened after the meeting, when, I guess, tempers were high. I'd like to kindly suggest to those of us of the middle persuasion that just like men sometimes get into pretty harsh discussions in the hay barn or by the football field or something, you know, they, they're human beings. They had conflict that escalated during the meeting. We invite you to consider, it was the whole picture. It wasn't just on Ms. Davis. So that's why she feels that we need to use the word retaliatory. I think going forward, I think that if this council and the mayor would recognize that she recognizes that that's not the best way to win friends and influence people to use such harsh language, and she does regret that. I think it's, she's in a difficult moment in having to express regret, perhaps why I'm attempting to do it on her behalf, because at the same time, she doesn't want to be treated any differently than anybody else who might get upset at somebody they serve with, and that she has a voice and that she knows that, I'll call anybody out by name, but she said she's heard some of the people sitting in this room use a few choice words about certain situations. I don't know if it was in the moment of heated exchange or not, but, you know, y'all might be better Christians than me. I just know sometimes my words get the best of me. And so, you know, that's what happened. We do ask, as you consider those letters, that, you know, I think the lady here expressed herself well. I think the others who wrote those are not here to explain themselves further. And so I just still go back to, I invite the council to think about how you can help bring folks together instead of taking some harsh action against this one person when there's a deeper issue that's going on here that I think y'all in your wisdom can help sort out. And again, I know I'm limited on time. I'm glad to answer any questions specifically, and if y'all have to the limit of my own knowledge about this.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
For him or for just?
Just, well, and I want to state that even though we may ask someone a question, they have the right not to answer.
Okay.
So I just wanted to state that. So if you have any questions, now would be the time to ask.
So is there a written statement from Stephanie that we have available to us? No? Do we know why we don't have a written statement?
Well.
Somebody asked me for a woman.
Well, there's that. I know in talking with her, just effectively advocating for her, I felt words coming through the attorney sometimes get softened a little bit.
I would like to say, I believe our attorney did reach out and ask for a statement, but we did not receive one. Is that correct?
Well, go ahead, Kim.
Point in fact, we chose to respond verbally. I think tone of voice, presentation, things like that can communicate more effectively than putting something on paper.
Okay. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
No.
I'm sorry.
If they had questions for you, you had your opportunity to speak. We're not allowing additional.
Well, I'll clarify my answer.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I wasn't asked prior to being added as an addendum item on the city council agenda. Once Brad reached out to my attorney and they began to work on resolution, that is at which point I was asked for a statement. And to my knowledge, the person in attendance at the meeting was not asked for a statement. Attorney was drafted in. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The reason why I ask that is I just want to make sure that I'm not missing any piece of the puzzle that we were presented with. I have a question for Brad. On the board appointments, is there, and I, this is my fault because I didn't look them up, and I should have did that before, is there anything that prohibits us from doing this action? Are we going against any of our own ordinances? Or, I'm asking Brad, is there anything against that? I mean, are we following what our own ordinances say?
Simply is that the mayor has the ability to make appointments. The mayor has the ability to remove, all with, both with consent of the council.
Okay.
So if that answers your question.
Yeah.
Yes, I think we're proper in being in an open forum, definitely giving it an opportunity. I think this is a good opportunity for deprocess to occur, and it certainly is, you know, I can't blame council for being here, and do agree with you, sometimes it's a lot easier to talk and convey things in person than through emails and texts and other platforms. So, but to answer your question, you're in compliance.
Okay.
As far as I'm.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
In the event that it's decided that Stephanie is retained on the board, at the end of her term, will the mayor have the authority, will you have the authority, to either renew her term or renew her membership?
Recommend her for nomination.
Or, yes.
Or someone else.
Uh huh.
Yes. That would be right.
And should that happen, then we have to vote on it again at that time?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I have another question, and this might be more for Brad and the attorney. Has there been an opportunity offered to the two parties to have some type of mediation where they can have a third party come in? No politics, just hash out any, hash out any, maybe, because I heard maybe both of them talk about there's some underlying issues that maybe have just been built up over time, maybe this was the boiling point. And I would like to say, if I'm allowed to, that Stephanie, you mentioned that, you know, we think you're a problem. I don't think you're a problem. I think if our city was more, had more people engaged, we would be much better off. And Ms. Quinalti, I completely understand, you know, we do this, we take time away from our families and from our jobs. That's why I was late today. I had to leave a meeting early and boogie on down I-40 and 180 mile an hour wind trying to get here because I care about this community, and so I know that that's why you do it. And it is disheartening when you come across a contentious situation because then you start to question, why am I even doing this? And then we start to question, I guess our mayor starts to question, why do we have these people who are not able to work at least peacefully on behalf of the people? And so I understand where that's coming from as well, Mayor. I guess my question is, is has every last opportunity for mediation been, have all of those been resolved before this? Because I think this would, for me, would be the last step.
So.
Have they had an opportunity to at least say, has Stephanie even had the opportunity to say she's sorry?
Can I, I'd like to answer that.
Sure.
This is a Donna-Stefanie issue.
Right.
It goes bigger than that.
Okay.
So Donna just happened to be here, was here to respond. Other two preferred not to. So it's deeper than that, and in fact, I'll have a statement I'm going to read in just a minute when we get through discussing. But it's not, I don't think it's just these two.
It's not just these.
Right. From my understanding.
Yeah, I did reach out to the two other ones that are in this letter just to confirm stories so that we did not get just something written in the heat of the moment. So I did that, even though they're not here, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify?
Please.
What Larry just asked, because if Donna's term is over, then all we would test Stephanie's terms, excuse me. If Stephanie's term's over, all we would vote on come that would be who you recommended to be on the park board, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So we wouldn't vote to remove Stephanie at the time. We'd only vote on somebody else being a part of the park.
Whoever would be nominated.
Yeah. And.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to her question that sounded like she wanted to, if I could give you assurance that we're open to such things? I agree with the mayor that the problems, as I've been told from my client, from Mr. Carter, my own due diligence, yeah, it's deeper. I think that kind of tone and overture would be welcomed. I know, just for what it's worth, I'm not aware of what Seminole Nation provides. I'm very fond of Chickasaw Nation's peacemaking process. I've had that training. I'm not saying I could be the peacemaker, I'm just saying, if there's something that could help folks build some true bridges, speaking on behalf of my client, we would be welcome to that. We would. I would also want to indicate as to the bigger issues that I do believe, I'm not just saying this because he's sitting here and we're on camera, Mr. Carter and I have had some very productive discussions. You have a very good city attorney here who's trying to work with me to resolve these issues in a way that helps everybody. So if that were to continue, we would continue trying to explore, you know, some different solutions, you know? And I did say that, you know, we have pending open records issue and some issues about the social media policy. Might turn into litigation. He would be an honored opposing counsel. It would be fun at a certain level, but on the other hand, you know, that I would hope that that's something the city could avoid if we can work out mutually agreeable solutions. So I just want to emphasize, we're very open to that, and your attorney has been very, very giving, and he'll listen, so we can work with that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I see this happening on February 16th. Did we have another park board meeting in March? Was there one scheduled? Why, was there just not one scheduled? Was there a reason we didn't have one?
They're not, I don't believe they're not. Are they on a month? They're quarterly.
Quarterly. Since we had this February one, they didn't have a regular.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, when is the next one scheduled?
June.
June would be after her term ends.
I'm not sure what, when is it going to be? I'm not sure.
Mine is until 2023.
Oh, okay. I heard two months.
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
Well, I apologize. I thought it was two months, but actually meant two meetings. I apologize. I'm sure y'all have the details of that in your minutes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So before we move forward, I'd like to, part of this is what I said last time, a little modified, but two things before that. One is, words do influence people positively and negatively, so you're correct in that. You know, they can be used to help attain the goal that you're trying to, or they can work the opposite way. And so, you know, that's very important for people to be able to discuss items and be able to work with others, and words do matter for sure. The other thing is, you know, I want everyone to know that I don't take any pleasure in this. I do not hold anything against Stephanie, and in my statement, I'm kind of going to go through part of why this is, I feel, is needed. You know, so again, I'm going to read this, so make sure I don't mess it up, but, you know, based on written information I've received recently, along with concerns... on written information I've received recently, along with concerns received verbally a few months ago from board members, Mrs. Davis's conduct during meetings creates a negative atmosphere which inhibits efficient, productive meetings. That was what I was told by board members, and at this point, it's been every board member has told me that verbally. Her behavior distracts the board from conducting the city's business in an efficient manner. Based on this information, I feel I have no choice but to recommend Mrs. Davis's removal from the park board. I'm sure some believe that I'm requesting her removal because of her support of cannabis. This can't be further from the truth. I personally nominated her for the park board, fully aware of her support of cannabis. We need people with fresh ideas to participate on our boards and committees, and I believe she has those qualities. But we also need people who have the ability to work with others and be respectful when they agree, when they disagree with decisions made or have opposing views. When I have local board members tell me that they are not going to continue on the board if someone stays on because they feel like they're wasting their time and they can't be productive, I have to take a serious look at that. And based on the feedback I've received, I felt like for our park board to be constructive and be able to achieve goals that we want to be achieved, that I didn't have any choice but to recommend this. And so, I'm still sticking with that recommendation. And with that, that's on the table. So we either need a motion or no motion.
A motion for what? Take a vote?
To remove, no, a motion to remove Stephanie.
Is it going to be a vote?
Well, if there's a nomination in a second.
I nominate it. Take a vote.
Okay. I'll need you to make a specific motion for the record.
To say what?
I mean, somebody's going to have to make a motion and call a question, I mean, in order for this to happen, so.
So the motion would be to remove Ms. Davis from the park board.
That would appear to be the motion, if that's the motion that you're making.
Now make their motion.
Is there any other way to go about this as far as removing someone? And I say this because all the members of the board have told you they would like her to be removed, but can we?
What they told me was.
Or they wouldn't say they didn't want to serve anymore.
And there's some that said they will no longer serve.
Okay, so if she hasn't been given the opportunity to apologize to them, why could it not be placed on their agenda for her to apologize and let them decide if they would like to keep her on there? And then we'll go with, can have the option to go with their recommendation.
They don't have the ability to vote on that.
They don't have that ability.
That comes from the council. Otherwise, they could select their own.
Could they recommend it?
Well, when they tell me that they're not going to continue to serve, I think that's pretty clear on what their wish is.
My only, my only issue, Mayor, is when you say that they reach out and say her behavior, was it, behavior is difficult or?
It's disruptive.
Disruptive.
It, some have said they feel like she has her own agenda that's not really an agenda for the city, which again, you can have different points of views, but they felt strongly enough in that to mention that specifically. So, you know, but those are their views on that.
I understand that, Mayor. I just, that triggered a little something in me, and we all know this. I've been the lone no vote a couple times here, and I'm sure I irritate folks when I ask a lot of questions, but that's what I need to, we all have, we all do things differently. Tim sits over there and nods his head yes and no when discussions are going on, you know, you know, I take notes. Like, we all do things just a little differently. And it was, it would be my wish that everyone did it my way, but that's not going to happen in this lifetime. So I just, I don't, I know, I almost, I don't know, when I hear that it's disruptive, does that mean it's just because she disagrees with them? Or is it, you know, she's threatening them or, you know, standoffish or what is, I mean, I don't know what that is. Maybe we need, maybe we need more, yeah, I mean, I know what this, this specific instance is, and that's why I was asking if there could be some mediation because of this specific instance, but you also mentioned it's a bigger board issue, and I think we're taking that into consideration as well as a whole, right?
That's really the reason, I made no statement of this.
Okay.
I mean, this is what I received several months ago, and then, you know, we know people go through tough times, and the question is, was some of that just a rough time? But it's in what has been submitted, it continues. So that's why, I mean, I just felt like, you know, it was a point that I needed to make this recommendation.
Sure.
I'll say something. Last month, or our last meeting, I had made motion to table this issue until this meeting, in hopes that there would be some reconciliation. Evidently, it doesn't seem like those kinds of opportunities have been presented. Was it something that I recommend? Stephanie has done a lot of positive things for our city. I don't agree with her tactics. I do things differently. I've had, I've supervised people since I was a teenager, and every now and then, I get someone to come and says, if you don't get rid of so-and-so, then I'm quitting. And so, I offer them the opportunity to quit, because I don't like to fire people under those kinds of pressures and circumstances, and I regret that you've been put in that situation, because I know that you researched and put a lot of work into appointing the members that you appointed. I wish there was some way that we could reconcile. I don't know if that's possible, it's possible or not. I just know it didn't happen between the last meeting, and I chose to not get involved in this because Stephanie is a friend. Not that I want her to be my paralegal, I have someone else for that. Her tactics are a lot of times effective, but it's, I feel like it's never okay to, well, I was telling, telling Jay when I came, I like Will Rogers. And there's a quote from him that I cherish a lot of, and I'm going to exercise it, and it says, "Never miss an opportunity to shut up." So that's what I'm going to do at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I probably need to make a statement as far as the, so there's no misunderstanding and echo what Mr. Kemper said. There have been discussions since the last meeting. We've talked quite a bit, at least something like this, and there were some things, I think, that maybe Stephanie had mentioned that she wanted to see maybe happen before we actually met with me and the mayor. And to be quite frank, I don't think a lot of those were fairly reasonable, and I don't think Mr. Kemper did either, but we did discuss some of those things that we thought that would be productive. On the flip side, you know, there are, it's, this is a tough situation for this, for a council. I mean, I've been doing this for, I don't know how many years, it seems like, we're all sitting here getting gray and bald, and we all had hair when we started, but this is the first time I've ever been a part of one of these, where we've actually had a motion like this, an agenda item like this. And it troubled me greatly. But I also know that for it to reach a level like this, there's an issue. So I do agree, one of the things that Mr. Kemper and I talked about, coming from Southern Oklahoma, we do do things differently sometimes, I guess. It's a lot of, it's cultural, maybe the way we grew up, brought in, and people are different in the way they do things, they're different in the way they approach certain things. And I think maybe Larry, what you're trying to say, and Kevin and I have kind of talked about this, Stephanie's approach sometimes isn't, isn't something that maybe we're accustomed to. You know, she's a, she's a person that likes to see results and likes to be, as Mr. Kemper said, heard, and she's very diligent and maybe sometimes a little pushy could be, maybe sometimes perceived to be a little bit more abrasive than, and all with the intent, maybe unintentionally, probably unintentionally, to be, to try to get her idea across, is what I'm trying to say. And sometimes that is perceived differently from people that are in, you know, that have done things differently all their life. But I will say this, I'm not here, I'm not a policymaker, okay? What you have to make a decision today is, do you remove, do you not remove? Do you remove, not because she takes a different, has a different opinion, or a different idea, doesn't support an idea, doesn't support a vote, that you don't do that. You can't do that. Everybody has a right to have a different opinion on a particular topic. But if there is not the ability to carry on the administration of government, that's what you're probably looking at, and that's what I think I understood the mayor to say. And that's, that's what I'm, what I'm going to tell you. That has to be, you know, if it's inefficient, if it's a distraction, if it keeps the body from doing what they are set, or the purpose is for them to do, they're exercising their duties and to perform, that is something that, yes, I mean, you can take action on. But I caution you, I don't want anybody here to vote to remove anyone just because they have a different idea or take a different view on a topic, because that's not what, I mean, we all know that. So I just want to make that clear. Okay? That's all I have to say.
So we do have a motion on the table.
There's a motion to remove Stephanie Davis from the park board, is that correct? Mr. and Mrs. Kemp.
Yes.
We'll call for his change.
Sorry, who made the second?
John.
John, thank you. Tim Hoplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Abstained.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
No.
Dana Miller? John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. So, all those in favor, I, those like, sign. We adjourn.